Mayor and Council, how's it going? So I'm gonna start, big picture. I did this presentation last night and I made a couple tweaks. But, big picture. Every drop of rain that falls in the city limits of Burnie goes to Siblo River. So all of our tributaries, Frederick, Ranger, Curry, No Name Creek, Minga Creek, Browns Creek, they all flow to the Siblo. The Siblo flows in the southeast direction and it connects to the San Antonio River south of Karn City. And then San Antonio River flows all the way to the Gulf. So we hear from a handful of people here and there about flowing to the Guadalupe or other stuff like that. So the majority of Kendall County flows to the Guadalupe River, but all of Burnie flows to the Siblo, which is the San Antonio River. And why that's also important is separately, the Texas Water Development Board is working on a drainage master plan for this whole San Antonio River basin. So in the next handful of years, we're gonna see potential for flood projects coming out of this basin. And it's actually something that I got appointed to, so I represent every city in this flood basin. And we go to meetings and we just selected our consultant to help us on that as well. And that consultant is a teaming partner, is one of the consultants that's helping us do drainage as well here in town.
That was just a, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that was a consequence of Larry Bailey reaching out to us and saying, "Hey, there's an application for this," if I recall correctly.
Correct.
And you got, and you applied, we had a couple other folks in the county apply, but that's a big deal.
Correct. So rainfall, on a yearly basis. Some years we get lots of rain, some years we get less rain. So we have kind of our peak, this is Mr. Kite gave me his last 30 years of rainfall data that he's kept personally, and that's what I've based this on. So back in 91, we have 64 inches of rain in a year. And in 2008, we had about 13 inches. And per John Kite, we're averaging about 34 inches a year. Weather Surface says 32, but John says 34, so that's where it went down. So that's for a year. And a month, every month is different as well. So this is a chart that I found from TCQ that just kind of shows our general area with the average rainfall amounts are for the month. So you'll see September is the highest typical rainfall amount for a month, followed by May, which we just ended up in May. But you'll see May, the average is about three and a quarter, three and a quarter inches is the average rainfall event for May. If you look at the data to the right, we had about 14 inches in May, so we had a very wet year. So four, three, four times as much water as we normally do. So drainage, as we continue to get bigger and bigger. In FEMA's, FEMA, what they've been tracking, the 1964 rain event, is our most damaging event that we've had in town, where we had 17 inches of rain happen overnight. So one night, so just think, all over the month of May, we got that plus more in one night in 1964. Actually, city of Burnie itself only got about four inches, so it was all upper watershed. So that's a lot of water. It came down, in engineering speak, it's 36,400 cubic feet per second, so a cubic foot, 12 inch, 12 inch, 12 inch, every second. So 36,000 of those were flowing down Siblo Creek. And FEMA calculated that as a 50-year event, so that's a key point as we talk further, that per FEMA, our worst flood event ever was a 50-year event. So as many of our neighbors have had multiple 100-year events, just remember, we've only had a 50-year. Massive flooding, lives were lost, lots of animals were lost. One of our vets that used to be located on River Road, which has been redeveloped, that whole building went underwater and all the animals in the structure perished. I actually got a phone call today, this one picture on the left from Buddy's Grocery, that was completely wiped out. I got a phone call this morning from someone who watched my presentation last night, that there's a safe of money that washed away from Buddy's in 1964 and has never been found. So somewhere out there is a safe. Now, how much money in 1964? Might be a couple hundred bucks, we'll see. Someone can find it. So obviously, that was a big deal, got council, past councils really involved in thinking, what are we gonna do to protect the city from this ever happening again? So in 1972, the city of Burnie got permission from the Water Commission to go build a flood control structure that we now know as Burnie Lake. Several years later, in 1979, that was, permit was modified, allowing us to take domestic water out of it and turn it into a drinking water lake. And several years later, in 2005, it was turned into a park. So the point that I want to make there is, Burnie Lake, first and foremost, is a flood control lake. That was what it was designed for. Got some pictures here in '76 and '77. If anyone's ever been out on a boat to the inlet structure out there by the dam, that's the picture in the bottom right. So it's kind of neat to see that's really deep in water, there's a crane underneath it, so I know I've been out there in a boat and it's pretty neat to see that picture. So another fun fact, Burnie Lake is one of four flood control dams. There's actually three others. Burnie Lake is the biggest one by far, but there are three others. Two of them are maintained by the county and then two of them are maintained by the city. And all that's 21,000 acres go to those four flood control dams upstream of the lake, I'm sorry, upstream of town. So this is actually an original picture from the original design of the four structures. So that's 21,800 acres. If you take that down to River Road Park, it's 32,000 acres flow to that point. So the part I like to bring up there too is, so 21,000 of 32,000 are protected by the flood control structures. So we have 10,000 acres that come to downtown city that have no protection whatsoever. And I do, today's city limits is about 7,600 acres. Just to show comparison, we basically have four cities upstream of us flowing onto us, roughly size-wise. Bernie passed flood control, I'm sorry, post-flood control, these are some of the major rain events we've had in the past 20, 30 years. Again, the May 15, the Memorial Day 15, which was an event that struck Wimberly and Blanco really bad. We got a lot of rain too, so we got nine inches in 24 hours. And then you go through the list here, in July of '02, we had 30 inches over six days, 18 inches. So there's a lot of past rain events. The May of 15 is our second worst in modern history rain event. And this is a picture of the traffic signal in front of the number nine Longhorns Restaurant. There's a neat video of this as well, but I always like that the lights stayed on, so even though it's five feet underneath the water, get your green and red lights. There's also a very entertaining video of a white Jeep getting washed away in Tapatio, but I can't show it to you because it's got a lot of language in it. You can go find it on YouTube.
I don't think I remember that one.
Yeah. July of '02, I mentioned, so we had six days in a row that it rained lots. Actually, Burnie did very well compared to our neighbors. I was a commuter at the time and I got stuck here at I-10, this is the I-10 in front of the rim, that it actually overtopped Leon Creek, overtopped I-10, completely stopping all traffic. And a buddy of mine was in front of me, by about 10, 15 minutes, I was running late that day, and about 7:20 a.m., it overtopped and couldn't go into San Antonio anymore. So I had to go home. Darn. But again, that's a lot of rainfall in six days in a row. These are South Texas historic events, so just be thinking, again, we had 14 inches last month, and all the issues we had and complaints we received. Think through some of these other rain events, 36 inches in 18 hours, 32 inches. Zorn, I had to look up Zorn, Zorn's a little city over by Seguin, for those that might not know where that is. Kerr County in '02, they had 42 inches, so they had 10 more inches in five days. And then everyone obviously knows Harvey, they had 52 inches in four days. So just think, if one of those tropical storms were ever to sit on top of Burnie, what would have happened in our drainage events? Drainage plans. So again, after the '64 event happened and '68, there's a report that I have upstairs that kind of contemplated building big four flood control structures. It's a really neat study to go back and look at. Since then, we had a '91 drainage plan, and then in '02, we had a pretty thorough drainage plan as well. The '02 report came out with four, sorry, five major points. Number one, to update the subdivision ordinance to account for the drainage events that happened in '98, and that what happened. And I'll tell you, in '02 and since then, we've had, for figuring out how big your pipe is for drainage, we've had one of the toughest codes for a long time in that. We started designing to the 100-year storm event, and our amount of rainfall was a lot more than San Antonio and the brown holes at the time. So that was good. In '02, they recommended that we start a stormwater utility. So we did, took us 18 years, but we got that. And develop a model for Curry and No Name Creek. And No Name Creek is the creek that kind of goes down Adler by Old City Hall, it has no name and it's officially No Name Creek. The two other items were prepare, plan for improvements, and finance and implement improvements, and that was all based on, once the utility happened. So those options didn't happen because the utility didn't happen until today, or actually, April of '19. April of '19, council passed the stormwater utility with an proposed effective date of January of '20. We actually had some internal billing issues, we were getting a new software version and it was kind of tricky, and we decided, let's postpone it a couple months till April of 2020. And then if you recall, COVID happened and we felt bad hitting people up for more money in April, so we postponed it again to January 2021. So it started in January 2021. Currently, we're billing about $50,000 a month. Most residential people, my bill's $4 a month, 80%, of our residential people will be $4 a month. To date, we've billed approximately $253,000, and by the end of the fiscal year, we should have about $450,000. And that is all based on impervious cover, so we had a consultant come through and map, you can see the picture on the left, all the blue areas are supposed impervious cover, and all the calculations and everything are based on impervious cover. Current drainage master plan. So we've started a new drainage master plan now that we have a stormwater utility. We hired a consultant, we're working through trying to develop projects, we've been meeting closely with our stormwater committee that a couple of you are on. In February, we opened up and sent a lot of public notice out and tried to get some feedback from our public of what drainage problems we had. And then created this pushpin map on your right here, where people could go and identify drainage problems, and allowed them to put, whether it's a serious problem or a minor problem, it had a couple categories and a couple logic items behind that, so we've tracked all that. Our consultant is making, making, making a list and kind of organizing those projects. We're also looking at a lot of, the term that we use today is nature-based solutions. We know no one in the city, including myself, wants to go into Curry Creek and turn it into a big concrete channel to fix the drainage problem. That would fix the problem, but none of us want that to do that, so what other solutions can we come up with? And we might need more regional detention structures somewhere out there. We might need to go buy pieces of property that are in the floodplain and turn those into something besides a house. So those are other options that we're thinking of besides going and building big ugly channels everywhere through town. Development code changes, drainage-wise, we've had a lot of drainage changes since, since I've been here at least. In February of 2020, we redid the subdivision ordinance, and we created the drainageway protection zones, and we added a local floodplain requirement. So if you look on the pictures at the bottom, the kind of light blue and the purple are the regulated FEMA floodplains, and the dark blue are the new local floodplains. So FEMA stops their regulation about 640 acres, plus or minus a square mile. So there's a lot of areas like Adler Road where the FEMA floodplain just stopped. There's a lot of water going there, 640 acres is a lot of land draining. 25-acre watershed, so that added all the dark blue areas that we're tracking and making sure people develop those correctly. The other thing we did is the drainageway protection zones. You see the image on the bottom right, we created four categories based on watershed size and provided a buffer from the center line of the creek that are basically no build areas through those areas. And so our consultant has put together a map that we now have in GIS form, and it's really for us as staff, when someone shows up as a potential development project, we can say, "Hey, you have to go look at the drainageway protection zones, we think you have this on your site, and it's something we can look at." And we're working to put that on our city website, so everyone will have that as well. And in the February '02 ordinances, we provided a lot more detail on LID, water quality requirements. In August of 2020, we updated the flood damage prevention ordinance. Three main points that we did there is that we put greater restrictions on residential within the floodplains. We made restrictions on the height, the finished floor above the flood elevation. And the other big one we put in there too is a net storage volume requirement. So if you look at the picture at the bottom, it's kind of the natural creek, and I don't have it labeled, but you can see where the drainage protection zones are kind of the limit of where you can't touch. But this developer decided he wanted to do something on the one bank to do some fill, which that means he has to go to the other bank or somewhere else in the watershed and he has to get that material and move it. So in the end, it's a net volume of zero in the overbank storage. So that's something that, it's a big point that people just can't go and put fill in our floodplains without creating another place for that water to go. UDC, we've spent a lot of time working on potential drainage changes for the UDC. Again, that's tentatively scheduled to be approved in July. One of the things that I get a lot of calls, even the last month, any time it starts raining more, I get, we get a lot of calls, and try to take some of those calls that we see and turn them into code revisions. One of the big ones, we get lots of phone calls on, are residential cross drainage, "Hey, that person's yard is draining onto my yard." We get that call frequently, and one of the things, unfortunately, that's not really a public water issue, it's more of a private landowner issue. But one of the things we can do is change our codes and make it more requirements for when builders get out there, that they do a more detailed plan of where their water goes. This exhibit on the bottom right is one that we see frequently, so can you imagine building a house and that's the direction you're given on where to send the water? We've also changed the amount of water that can flow from one house to the other house. If you see the ABC formats, where C basically flows behind you to your neighbor, so in theory, a C lot is typically stacked up to an A lot, and these are FHA grading regulations, so it's common speak in engineering. Lots of times, the C lot will drain onto the back of an A lot. Or you get other lots where you start getting more than one lot draining onto your lot. So we've put code requirements, we've copied it from some other cities out there, that you can't have more than one lot drain onto your lot. So one lot's amount of water is decent, but once you start getting more than that, it gets a lot of water into your yard. So that's requirements that we've added into the UDC. And we've added a lot more detail on detention ponds. We hear from a lot of public about several detention ponds in town that they don't like the way they were designed. They were designed correctly, they do seem to be working in our observations, but they could be done better. That's something, 20 years of consulting, engineering, learning to, I can't regulate people to do what I want them to do, I can only make them do what our code says. So we're trying to make it where our code is a little more detailed and get some of the gray areas out and make it more black and white. The two other big areas that we put into the UDC is groundwater recharge protection and enhanced erosion protection requirements, which is a hot topic these last couple weeks. And those were in the UDC and have been in the draft UDC for a long time, it's not we didn't add them in this week, we've had them proposed for quite a long time. So groundwater recharge, you might have heard in the general area, we have Edward's Aquifer recharge zone. So if you're in Bear County, or you're in Comout County, or you're in Hayes County, all the way up to Austin, it's a really big deal that you have to design and treat your development so that the water leaving your site is clean. Magically, it just stops at the Kendall County line. So even though the geology doesn't change, and the geology on this side of the line and that side are the same rock underneath us, in the eighties, when TCQ, and I've heard stories, but for whatever reason, the county decided they didn't want to be part of the recharge zone. So the recharge zone perfectly stops at the Kendall County line. That's something, again, water quality is a big issue that we all like. We've all seen these big recharge features that we have in town, we know it's there, so just because TCQ says it's not there, we've gone through and we've created some rules for the lower Glen Rose limit. So if you see the picture on the right, kind of that red area, that red area is the same geology as the Edward's Aquifer recharge zone. So we've created rules that when the developer shows up, he has to go hide. Basically, it'll create a buffer area around that. We used Edward's Aquifer kind of guidance, and we talked to Dr. Vinnie and a couple other well-known geologists in the area to kind of get that plan figured out. So that's a new item that's been in the UDC, and we're looking forward to when that goes into effect. Erosion control. So obviously, erosion control is a real hot topic this week, this week, and it's something that we've put quite a bit of more detail in. In today's subdivision ordinance that I can enforce, erosion control is mentioned in three or four little minor sentences. In the UDC, it's about four pages. We've put an entire big section of what erosion control plans need to be turned, what all needs to be shown on the erosion control plan, and when that plan gets submitted into the city as part of your permit set. So again, it's something that if, it's something that they turn into us, it's something that we can force a little better. The grand scheme though, is the city of Burnie is not a regulated MS4, which is municipal separate storm sewer system. That's another big fancy TCQ permit that we're gonna get one day. Truthfully, I don't want to get it anytime soon, it creates a whole lot of paperwork and other requirements that will need to get funded for us to do correctly. Fair Oaks just became an MS4 in their last cycle, we believe, because they were part of most of their cities in Bear County. We think we might be a while, but that permit renews every couple years. We're not in an urbanized area, which is the definition, is a population of at least 50,000, so we might be safe for a while. But in the end, we are not a regulated MS4, so any of the state rules for temporary construction runoff go through TCQ's office and not through us at this time. So that's something that we have to tell people, when we have every pre-construction meeting, we remind people that they have to do these controls, they have to do, for large sites over an acre, they have to do a notice, intent, NOI form, they have to send that off to TCQ's office. And TCQ is actually the regulating entity that can actually come out and force and give fines. I have personally talked to TCQ office several times about some of our projects in town, and the answer I get is, "Here's our website, go complain about them." So when I get calls into me asking this, I give people the exact same website that they've given me. And so I've given that website to several people. Go fill out your info on this website. San Antonio River Authority, again, we're part of the San Antonio River Authority, and they do have water quality people out here inspecting. We actually work very closely with them. We use San Antonio River Authority's labs to test, I mean, we test the lake monthly for water quality. We are now testing down on River Road as well. We use their labs, and we're actually testing in concurrent. We've spoken with them, and they'll tell you the same thing, that even though we are part of the San Antonio River area, they have no jurisdiction in Kendall County. Kendall County doesn't participate, we don't have a SARAH line item on our tax bill like all of Bear County does, so a lot of their regulations just end, again, at the county line. These pictures here are just your typical controls, your silt fence and your rock berms that you see on sites. Our new plans will be able to require a lot more of those. Staff site visits. I've been known by many people to just cancel meetings and, "Hey, it's raining, I'm gonna go look at stuff." I go look at stuff on the weekends, I go look at stuff in the middle of the night when it rains, and we have lots of pictures of rain events throughout town. And really, the good idea is, we know kind of where the drainage problems are, and we see where some of the issues we might have. So we have a picture here at the north, on the top of the page, top left page, that's over by Middle School South. So that's two, three weeks ago, that was a drainage issue we had there that people called in, and it's really about some, it's on the other side of the picture, but there was a big blockage that we had to go and remove. Picture on the right is Plant Street. Issue there is the water fills up to the curbs. Now, I'll remind that our curb system is a part of the storm system. Curbs are supposed to flow full with water when it rains. We have problems when it stops raining and the water's still there, that's a problem that we can look at. But when it's raining and you have water in your curbs, that's normal and anticipated, that's how they design roads. It's, the engineers actually do a lot of calculations to figure out at the point that Picture at the bottom left is Curry Creek at Rosewood. So that was actually the last Saturday rain event, where it rained about an inch and a half in 30 minutes. And it came up real quickly there. So you can see, that's Curry Creek. We have another picture of Plant, muddy water on Plant Street. And then we have another picture that we just watched, one of the detention ponds in town. It's real faint to see, but you can see there's kind of a dirt debris line in that detention pond, and it's something that we typically can see on rain structures, and we can watch and see, this rain event happened, and it was about three, four inches, we can go back and look at the plans, and per their calc, it should have been halfway where it is. And it's something that we can watch and check to see if ponds are working the way they should be. So this, you can see this structure kind of has a V notch in it, and that's what limits, limits the water flowing through it. So it's a big, ginormous concrete structure that if you can see from a distance, but there's an internal V inside it that limits the amount of water. And the other comment we get a lot about is the detention ponds, and even the detention pond here outside, hey, that pond's never full of water. So remember, we were talking to rain events earlier tonight, we designed those ponds for the 100-year rain event. Per FEMA, we've never had a 100-year rain event. So if we have ponds that are full, that means we have problems. The ponds are designed for the outflow structure to limit the flow for the two, five, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year events. So they need to come up with a mixed design. So the V structures, sometimes I'll have structures with pipes at different heights. It's a lot of engineering calculation to go through, that a little bit of water goes out on a two-year storm, and when you get a bigger storm, more water comes through. So that's something that we look through all the time, but it's a common issue, we've had it multiple times even here, as ponds never full. We only got like a five-year or a 10-year rain event that's designed for a 100-year event. So when we do have ponds that are full and overtopping that, we have much bigger issues. So that's my update on drainage, so if you have any questions.
Yeah, Nana has a question.
I'm gonna make this as quick as possible. When, when a developer submit currently, not UDC, but currently, when a developer submits a plat, and they submit their everything to the city. And they have to meet certain requirements as far as drainage and how they're gonna direct.
Correct.
So we have, currently, we have that sum in place where we're beefing those up with the UDC.
Correct, exactly.
But I know in the past, even with all of that, we still have issues. So if we're gonna beef up these requirements in the UDC, how are we gonna ensure that all of these new requirements are gonna be met? I mean...
It's a great question, great question. So one is, we're staffing up to review, city of Burnie, for, for a long time, had two engineers. We now have five, wait, four, sorry, gotta think through that. We now have four. So we've staffed up, so we have more engineers reviewing plans. There's myself and I have two others underneath me now reviewing plans. At the same time as we're having to get our inspectors, we're gonna have to train them up on what all these new rules are and what these new items are gonna be. The issue that's gonna be difficult for a while is, we're gonna be living under two sets of codes for a long time. There's projects out there that, because of our grandfathering rules, and we've talked about the dormancy item that we just added, there's gonna be projects that are gonna be living under the old set of codes, probably for five, 10 years, before we get them out of the old code and completely in a new project coming in. Most of our big, most single-family projects, basically, they're locked into the code of when they started their project. With the exception of Esperanza, because our council people at the time had a great idea to put a sentence in there that they have to follow whatever current rules are at the time of the project. So that's something that we'll have to work through. Old projects, how come this neighborhood is getting, doing it this way, but this one's doing that? Our inspectors will have to know and treat things differently.
But I think that's, that's the important, because we can have all the codes and, but if we don't have inspectors that are trained to look for certain things and monitor during construction, I mean, it, it's useless, because then we get the phone calls when it didn't drain properly and the residents are upset.
Correct.
And you had said that TCQ monitors...
Temporary construction.
Temporary construction. Is silt fencing the, because I mean, we, we hear over and over again how it fails time after time. Is that the standard and...
So, yeah, so silt fence, which is the picture in the... Concentrated flow, you should switch from the silt fence to the rock berm.
Do, and we don't have any...
We don't have any rules right now to tell us, tell the person which one they need to use.
So we can't force someone...
Correct.
...to use more...
We, in our, in our current ordinance, we can't. In the new one, we can, but we can work very closely with, and we've sent out many times emails to contractors, developers, "Hey, you have a problem. You have a problem, you need to go fix it." And the other part of the silt controls and the erosion... And the other part of the silt controls and the erosion control ordinance with TCQ is there's two options for third part, for inspections, the contractors or the person in charge of the construction, which most of the time paperwork's done by the contractor. They have two options for inspections, and the one that we see most common is a weekly inspection, that every seven days you're supposed to come to the site and inspect it. The other option is every, within 24 hours after any rainfall event more than a half inch. That's really tough for people to manage and keep track of, and then there's one day you have to go inspect every project in town. So most of the contractors do that every seven days, which is allowed, it's allowed by TCQ rules. What the happen, what happens and we see a lot of is, it rains day one, they have a bust or something where it happened, and then it rains again on day two, it rains again on day three, and their inspector doesn't have to show up again until day seven. So they're meeting the rules of the ordinance by having an inspector every seven days, but stuff happens in between. So that's something that we see a lot, and so we will send emails, and we've sent many emails to many developers and contractors in town. Some are better than others at getting out there and getting stuff fixed.
You're talking about the contractors?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ty?
So with the UDC, what will change for erosion control as far as what we can regulate?
So we will have specific items in our code that says, rock berms here, silt fence here, you can only have silt fence every 200 feet, you can only have rock berms. So this much a disturbed area will need silt fence. And so we'll have very specific rules that we copied from, actually, the LCPA Highland Lake Rules, have some of the most restrictive ones that we found, and two or three other people have told us that that's kind logical and clear definitions of, you need silt fence, the slope is this, you need silt fence here, if you need, the water's amount this, you need rock berm here. The problem you'll still run into, again, is the rock berms and the silt fence, if we have a big rain event, these aren't designed for 100-year flood events, they're not designed for 50-year flood events, these are designed for the one-inch, two-inch flood events, the typical construction duration projects. So lots of times, these rock berms or silt fences aren't high enough, so that's something that we need to look at, putting two silt fences, or putting them back to back, or putting rock berms behind the other. So that's something that we'll have in the code that kind of defines that a little bit better.
If a silt fence or another erosion control fails and gets on, there's some sort of damage to someone's property, I guess, how do they go about getting it cleaned up? How's that process work?
So it's definitely, the way the TCQ ordinance works is that it is the developer contractor's responsibility to go do that. What nine, what we see lots of times is, the actual act of cleaning up a little bit of dirt causes more disturbance than just leaving it as is. To go get a couple inches worth of dirt, you're gonna need to go send your backhoe or your bulldozer to go through and scoop all that up, and now, instead of just having a little bit of dirt on the top of the grass, now we have a 10-foot wide or 25-foot wide swath of now all dirt instead of grass. It just, it kind of snowballs from there, where lots of times, it's, it's so tricky to go and get it cleaned up that it's easier just to leave it. But the big issue is with trash, and that's one thing we see with trash, the trash and debris and form boards and other miscellaneous construction pieces will all wash away, and that's something that contractors can go and pick up, that's something we've sent, I know we've sent the Regent Park One searching for stuff way on the other side of I-10, so they've gone and picked and cleaned stuff up there as well. So that's something we will make them do.
When you, someone's, when the contractor has to go clean it up, is it their discretion on how they're cleaning it up, or is it the private landowner saying, hey, why don't you go out there by foot, no bulldozer?
Correct, so obviously, anytime you do something on someone else's property, you have to get permission and get agreement, and some times, a lot of others say your trash, please come pick up this. That's definitely something that they have to work with, even, even me, the city, I can't go walk on someone's property without permission.
So with Shoreline, what, are they fixing their detention system and drainage for stormwater enhancements based on failures? They're just doing that because we requested them to do that?
Correct.
Because otherwise TCQ would be the regulating
Correct. To our knowledge, TCQ has not showed up, even though probably 100 people have called them. To my knowledge, they haven't showed up. But I know we sent an email to KB Homes, and, and I sent an email, Mr. Thompson sent an email, and they went out and they made a lot more changes to their erosion control soon thereafter.
And then one final question, do we have a way to track contractors, et cetera, that have a lot of issues? You said some are better than others, so that way, when we're having to make whatever decision, we know, like, hey, well, this is the contractor that's, has 10 of these, and before we make a property more dense, we should have that knowledge. I'm just curious if that's a...
Yeah, it's, there's multiple ways we can do that. I mean, obviously, there's developers, and the developers hire contractors. So some developers work with the same contractor over and over again, some developers will hire whoever's cheapest. And contractor could be a different developer, so it's tough. You can go to, you can go to TCQ's website right now and type in our zip code, and it'll pull up a list of every infraction in the zip code, and you can watch, and there'll be, there are some developers and there are some contractors on there as well. Thanks, Jeff.
Questions? Joe?
Yes, Mayor, the fellow at the Council, Rollison. Based on the feedback that's been received regarding into the issue of Shoreline, the current measures that are in place there, have they failed based on the recent rain? Yes or no? Did they fail?
Yes, rain event problems.
So they failed completely. We know that, because we've got multiple evidence of documentation of silt buildup in city property, city retention ponds, and the Sybilla Creek, et cetera. My question is, when you talk about runoff and concerns about issues of drainage, sites are different, and some are more sensitive than others. And I am very concerned that, having failed the most simple issue of rainfall that we had, because you just outlined some very serious rainfall events, certainly most of us knew about the May 2015 and the 2002 event. We haven't even gotten to the construction of anything yet, and what are, what is gonna be put in place to protect Bernie Lake? Bernie Lake, yes, it was built as a flood control structure, that is true, but the reality is, it is now a water source for the city of Bernie. It's a drinking water source. Regardless of what it was built for, its function now is both a flood control and a drinking water source. I am concerned that we have seen a failure of just silt and mud. What happens when there are hundreds of homes with pesticides, fertilizers, dog and domestic animal residue, et cetera, et cetera, car residue, and there's a failure of whatever they're planning to do to protect Bernie Lake? How are we to enforce, based on what you said, a more significant and stringent protection for a critical water source for the city and for flood control?
Sure, good question. So there's kind of two parts, one is the temporary erosion control, and two is the, like, more permanent water quality, stormwater detention. So they're, they're both part of the project, but they're kind of two separate items. So the one is, obviously, the temporary erosion control. It actually says that they're supposed to try to minimize any silt or any erosion from leaving the site. And that's something the code doesn't specifically say they have to stop, they have to try to minimize. So that's something that we see a lot of people, are they trying? So we've had people in the past that really aren't trying at all, they don't have anything out there. That's obviously, they're not trying, they don't have the third-party inspectors that are inspecting it weekly, that's where people have gotten in big problems. And we've had that in the past in the City of Bernie. That's not what KB is doing now. Yes, they did have a structure fail, we had a big rain event, they had a silt fence piece that failed, so they had a section that, that water flushed down, and then it rained again, well, it still failed before they could get out, it was too muddy, they couldn't get out and fix it in time, but they did fix it. So then, when it gets into permanent water quality, obviously, we'll watch, when we get into the units of six and seven, that much more detail. I mean, as you mentioned, some projects have more environmental concern than others, so that's something we'll look at in a lot more detail, we'll work with them in a lot more detail. The water quality basins that they're proposing, we've really seen the first draft of so far, we still have a long way to go to get those approved by them. They went and hired a different engineering firm to design those, an engineering firm that knows how to design those very well. So we're expecting to see good things from those basins. The thing that I'll comment as well is, remember, I think I said, it's 12,000 acres, so Bernie Lake has 12,000 acres that flow to Bernie Lake. Some of that's in different phases of existing single-family, existing ranches, existing all sorts of stuff out there, that all sorts of contaminants from 12,000 acres are flowing to the lake today, every day, from every cow, deer, goat, anything else that's out there, is flowing to the lake today, and we still have great water quality. So hopefully, when we take 12,000 acres and we develop a couple more, and there's a lot of acres in there that are developed, but as we develop this other more, this other denser part, and it actually has water quality features designed into the project, again, there's other single-family neighborhoods in that 12,000 acres that have no restrictions whatsoever, they have no water quality basins, they have no rules on what fertilizers or anything else that they can use. And the other big concern we have as engineers is septic systems. Septic systems, one day, we're gonna have a problem with the septic systems, a 20-year-old, a 30-year-old septic system that goes bad, and we have raw sewage dumping into Bernie Lake, that's gonna happen one day. I see that as a bigger concern than what's gonna go through Shoreline.
Projects are under construction, who is, who decides where the silt fences go? And what is that? Is that the engineers that are doing that?
The design engineer puts that on their plans.
Okay. So in case of Shoreline, that is probably Mack and Hoover.
Correct.
Okay. Back to detention, when we started, I'm gonna go to you with the question, we started a project that I was pretty engaged in as it related to detention. We concluded, I thought, with our consultant, that moving some of our detention ponds to combo detention-retention, where we were talking about one-to-two-year retention, two-year or not detention, did we conclude that in those discussions? I kind of remember that with Troy and others, I don't know if you had been on staff yet. Do you remember those conversations?
For Shoreline specifically?
No, I was just talking in general.
No, just in general, that the designs would be modified such that we would retain some, and initial washes, and then, and then allow flow after that.
We'd specifically gotten into two-year retention, the rest of it detention as it's currently designed, to take care of the more common, right, the 70% occurrence events. We've talked specifically around Durango, John Kite was involved in some of these conversations as well. I thought we concluded that, but I don't remember how that got manifest in any of our future plans.
So that was, that was before my time, but I know I've had a lot of conversations with John Kite about retention and percolation in our soils here.
Right.
In general, we have a lot of solid rock, and we have a lot of high clay content soils, and a little bit in between, but really, solid rock, water doesn't soak into very well, and clay, water doesn't soak into very well either. So that's something we can see, but it just takes a really long time. It will, yes, it will soak in eventually, but we have a handful of places on the Number Nine Trail or other places in town that water will sit for a week after it rains, and so that's not a high percolation area for the water to really soak into the ground.
I understand that, but on the two-year event, which were common, if it retained up to a two-year event, then the downstream wash that happens with a high degree of regularity, that gets minimized regardless of how fast it percolates.
Correct.
Anyway, I thought we had concluded that we were gonna move to that as a design standard, but I don't remember how that got manifest in any of our ordinances.
Yeah, I can't, I'm, obviously, you have no response to, and has it been incorporated? It sounds like Jeff would know if it had.
I was on the wrong subcommittee, I was focused on some other things, and I didn't jump on that.
We did discuss that.
We did, I recall that very distinctly, that we went to a two-year, a two-year retention design, and we even talked about retrofitting some of our existing detention ponds, because it wasn't gonna be that expensive.
Right, that is true. I know, just in general, one of the detention water quality ponds that we're seeing several turn in is the Batch Detention Device.
Yep.
I heard it mentioned earlier tonight, where it's basically a detention pond that has an outward structure kind of on a timer, that basically, it knows, hey, it rained, close the gate, and lets the pond fill up with water, and then it starts a 24-hour, 36-hour timer, and then when the water will sit, in theory, the silt will drop out, and then the timer will open the gate, and then it'll let it flow back out. So that's something that people have been doing over the recharge zone, and we've started to hear several people proposing to do that here in town, which, one of the things, as you mentioned, it allows you to stack your detention and your water quality, so it makes it a good site design feature, that it's not having a water quality pond and a detention pond side by side.
I'll follow up with you guys, and maybe we can just address that with the entire council at some future date, in the not-too-distant future.
Dave?
Yeah, sure.
Let me know, question, for Jeff, you said that in this recent event, TCQ is responsible for enforcement, and you've said that you've reached out, the city's reached and citizens have reached out, and they have yet to come out to inspect, is that what you're confirming for me again?
I'm not aware that they've been out. If they've been out, they haven't let us know.
So my question is, at what point, what is our, what is our recourse? When we have a problem as a city, and TCQ responds to nothing from the city, the citizens, elected officials, what, do we have any recourse? Barbara, any legal recourse? What is our recourse? None? Just can't do anything?
So I know, quickly before Barbara, I know one thing that we added in the UDC for new submittals for new projects is a statement from the developer that he doesn't have any outstanding TCQ issues outstanding, or if he does, what's the reason behind it? So it'll be a paper that we're getting, but I don't know, Barbara, if you have any other comments.
Right, that was one of the things that we had talked about that we changed, so that we will have more ability to control from a city perspective, the way that we've written it into our new UDC regulations.
I have one other question for Barbara, and she may not be able to answer here, but just to research it.
Sure.
What is the history of cities filing for injunctions?
That's what I was gonna suggest next.
When they fail to respond to any, or TCQ fails to exercise its authority as it's supposed to, is there any track record of that, or does that not exist, or whatever?
I was going to suggest that next, I think that would be our next option, and I don't have a recollection at this time about the track record, but I know that there have been lawsuits on similar issues, and so that's something that I think will be something the city will want to consider.
Okeydoke. I don't want to get off track of what our topic is, so we're not talking about Shoreline today, we're talking about just general detention-retention. All right, Jeff, I gotta tell you, I'm glad you're part of the Bernie team, because that was amazing information that you just shared with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Legislative update, we're done.
Well, aren't you glad? I think we can all breathe a sigh of relief.
Yes.
It's over. All we're waiting for now is for the governor to sign. The governor has 10 days to sign the bills, and if they take 10 days to get to him after the legislature ends, then he has 10 more days, so it would be June 20th at the latest. If he doesn't sign them, they become law, but if he can veto the bill, of course, rather than sign it. There's about 1,500 bills usually that he has to review and either sign or do something with. Also, there's going to be a TML legislative update session, the last one, on June 21st in Austin, so if anyone's interested in attending that, let me know. I'm planning on attending it and letting you guys know if they give us any more information. So some bills have already been signed by the governor. The one that requires us to post our 380 agreements on the website and to send them to the comptroller, and the comptroller will have a website where they will be posted, and we also have to give the comptroller other information, that one has been signed, it will take effect September 1st, so our 380 agreements are going to be going to the comptroller. The one about cyber, expanding cybersecurity training requirements and causing us not to be eligible for certain state grants if we don't have our officials and employees trained, that's been signed by the governor, that takes effect immediately. A bill to fix a drafting error, HB 2429, which gives us additional alternative language for cities under 30,000 in our tax adoption notices. for cities under 30,000 in our tax adoption notices. There were some bills that I told you about last time, that just needed to be concurred in by Sunday, I don't know if you remember me talking about that. They were mainly affecting police, and those have